All right, good afternoon once again. It is 12:11, so we are going to go ahead and get started with our hearing. I am Councilman John Bullock, Chair of our Education, Youth, and Older Adults Committee. In attendance, we have City Council President Z. Cohen. We have Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Mark Parker, the 1st District. We have Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton of the 6th District. We have also Councilmember Jermaine Jones of the 12th District, Councilmember Odette Ramos of the 14th District. Those were all members of the committee. And we're also joined by Mark Conway, Councilman of 4th District, who is also sponsor of the subject matter for today. I would also ask for folks to make sure their phones are silent before we start. And I would also want to note that today is a pretty auspicious occasion. It is the first meeting of our Committee on Education, Youth, and Older Adults. And the subject matter for today is City Council Bill 250002, Studying Report: Absences in Baltimore City Schools. For the purpose of requiring the Baltimore City Public School System, City Schools, to prepare a report exploring the root causes of student absences to better identify solutions to address the most persistent barriers students face to attending school, requiring city schools to collaborate with certain city agencies to propose recommendations to address the root causes of unexcused absences found in a report, and providing for a special effective date. Now, I will also take some privilege here and say, this is very, very critical point to me. I say that as a father of a city school student. I say it as an educator. We know that this is a critical issue for our city, for our future success, for our young people. I also recognize that as a father, it is my responsibility to make sure that my students are doing their homework and they're going to school, and we all have a role to play. I do also recognize the privilege that I have as it relates to getting my son to school. But not everyone has the support system at home. Not everyone has the same level of access as it relates to transportation. The fact is that there are people in this room who will provide some feedback, some thought around what is possible and what is needed. I think I'm very happy to have representatives of the Mayor's Office of City Schools and also the MTA, because these are transportation issues, these are administrative issues, these are also educational issues as well. And also, we're being joined by another one of our partners, who also has a young person in Baltimore City Schools, and as Councilman James Torrance of the 7th District, along with myself, and Councilmember Parker, Councilmember Ramos, Council President. We all have city schools students, we all have skin in the game. So without further ado, I will allow a few comments from Council President Cohen.
Thank you, Sir Chair, and thank you to Councilman Conway, the sponsor of this bill. I also want to thank MTA, who came here on very short notice, as well as Baltimore City Public Schools, the Mayor's Office, everybody who's in attendance today. I think what is most important in this hearing is that this is not just a Baltimore City Schools problem, and this is not just an MTA problem. This is a Baltimore problem. It is not unique to our city, but given the challenges that we have with transportation and with safety of our young people, it is critically important that every single one of us be part of the solution. The time is now. There have been many reports that have been done on this issue of student attendance. There has been much reporting recently in the media. The time to come with solutions is now. I will say, as a former Baltimore City Public School teacher, and as a current parent of a child and soon-to-be two children in the school system, it is critically important that every family in our city have access to a high-quality school option. And when we think about school choice, it is not really a choice if it takes you 90-plus minutes to get to school or to get home from school. And so there is work for all of us to do, but what I am most excited about is the opportunity for us to do it in partnership with all of our institutions, working together for the betterment of our children and our families. Again, I want to thank Councilman Conway, who sponsored this really timely bill. I want to thank the Chair of this committee, who has been a longtime champion for education, as well as several of my colleagues on this committee. Councilman Torrance worked in the school system. Sharon Green Middleton was a teacher. The wealth of experience that we have on this council, as it relates to schools and specifically city schools, I think is really important. Mark Parker, the Vice Chair, ran a early childhood center. So there is a lot of experience here, and I hope that together, collectively, we can tackle this issue. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this point, I'll turn it over to Councilman Conway for some initial remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. President, for your very eloquent support for this bill, and of course, the collaborative effort for which we intend to bring it today. So of course, attendance is integral towards young people's success in our school system. And we know that this has historically been a challenge for our Baltimore City School System, but this, I believe, is going to be a significant effort for the city to be partners in helping to solve any challenges that the school system may have outside of their control in addressing this issue, which is why I'm really pleased to have MTA here to help us discuss what is relevant from that perspective. So for the Maryland State Department of Education, looked at this issue across the state and noted that 30% of students statewide were chronically absent for the 2022 to 2023 school year. Unfortunately, in Baltimore, we have the worst problem of all the counties, noting from the 2023 to 2024 school year, that 48.7% of students were chronically absent. Now, chronically absent means that a student is missing 10% or more of school days, and that merely comes out to 18 days. But those 18 days can be critical in our young people actually getting the education and learning and support services that we provide in schools. And it's not just math and science. It's the social-emotional learning, it's the resources, it's lunch, it's all those pieces that we provide through our schools to make sure that we support our young people. So in trying to tackle this challenge, initially, I went directly to the school system and said, hey, I want to be helpful here. And they've been incredible all through this, and I'm really thankful to have strong partnership with Baltimore City Schools and thinking about how we want to look at this issue going forward. This bill is geared toward identifying the root causes for why young people are not going to school, but even more, trying to work in partnership with the school system and multiple city agencies and the council to think about how we can intervene and be partners in resolving those issues. We know that the Banner, of course, recently did a very, 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 very insightful deep dive into transit and its role and the ability for young people to reliably get to school on time or at all. And so that's something that we understand to be part of the problem. We also know that with school choice means that you can go anywhere across the city, and sometimes those distances can be a challenge as well, which puts that additional stress on our transit system. But we know young people have any number of reasons why they may not be able to reliably make it to school. We have young people that are really caregivers for their siblings. We have young people that are dealing with any number of stressors, safety concerns, or otherwise in their neighborhoods, for which they may or may not feel safe going to and from school during the day or in the evening. We have so many challenges in front of our young people, and one of the key parts that we hope to achieve in identifying these challenges is to help quantify it, to help qualify it, and to think about what we as the city can do to support the school system, and of course, what the school system can do within their own boundaries to help address those issues. So I'm really excited to have this opportunity to dig into this bill today. Really looking forward to support from my colleagues. I really appreciate the Chair for calling this hearing so quickly, and open to any questions that folks may have about the bill. Thank you.
And thank you, Councilman Conway. I also want to note that we have been joined by Councilman Zach Blanchard of the 11th District, who also has been a coach here in Baltimore City Schools, so he also has literal skin in the game. I do want to go over agency reports, but I also want to turn it over to the Mayor's Office. Government Relations, if you have any points now, or are you good?
No.
All right. So looking at the, we'll go down the agency reports, and then we'll also look for some presentations, but really quickly, I see the City Solicitor, Law Department. Do you have comments at this point?
Desiree Lucky with the City Solicitor's Office. We have reviewed some of the amended language to the bill that would do an invitation to the relevant parties as opposed to a requirement, and if that is introduced, then we would be able to support the bill.
Thank you. Let's see, Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs has a favorable report. Stand by the report.
Yes.
All right, let's see. And now we have Baltimore City Public School System. I know that you have a presentation as well, so we'll give you some time to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate being here. I appreciate the opportunity to speak about this bill. Councilman Conway did reach out to us, and so he's been a great partner in terms of helping us think about this challenge that is a challenge across the state of Maryland, across the country, that we take very seriously and we've been working hard at. So I appreciate the chance to talk about it today, and I do really feel the Team City Schools vibe here. This is a council that is, does have students who attend city schools, who have worked at city schools, and are committed to city schools, and we greatly appreciate that. And as a city schools' parent, myself, of two graduates of city schools, I can speak, attest to the wonderful education that they received and how proud I am of what they've done with their lives, including one of them will be graduating from College Park this year and has been admitted to the City Teaching Alliance. And so will be coming back to be a parent in Baltimore City Schools next year, and then a teacher the year after. So we are Team City Schools at the Perkins Co. and household as well. So first, so we're going to talk about this study, but I also, I'd be remiss if I don't talk also about recent progress that city schools has made. We're very fortunate to have a longstanding superintendent, who is the longest-standing superintendent in city schools since 1946, and that kind of continuity and that caliber of leadership makes a big difference in terms of ability to actually see continuity and growth in city schools, and we're seeing growth in really all the key metrics at city schools, and so just wanted to take a chance to acknowledge that. So, next slide. Recently got some really great news about the nation's report card, and particularly about a study that was done out of Harvard and Stanford by two professors that looked at improvement using NAEP, the nation's report card, as well as each state's standardized test to look at the progress across the country. And city schools in that report had the second-largest growth in reading nationally among large urban districts. So that's a national study, second-largest growth since 2022 is a big, a big deal. We were also one of only five districts nationally who was outperforming where we were prior to the pandemic, and then in the top 25% of large urban districts in terms of our math recovery. And then last is that that's similar in Maryland, too. So we're the second-largest growth in Maryland in terms of post the pandemic, and one of only two districts in Maryland that's outperforming where we were before the pandemic. Also, NAEP, on the NAEP score alone, our 4th graders saw the third-largest math growth among school districts in large urban districts across the country. So that kind of growth, that kind of consistent performance is really important to our young people, and you see students performing at higher levels at all of our schools. Kindergarten readiness is another area I want to highlight. We have 53.4% of our school students, our students who attend city schools pre-Ks are indicating they're kindergarten ready. The state has no longer provides that assessment, but from the most recent year, the state did provide that assessment, they were at 44%. So we're well outperforming the state. We've been improving faster than the state, than the state on most metrics that you look at right now, and so we're very proud of that, those results. So talking a little bit more about attendance, just one other piece about enrollment first is that we also, because of some of those metrics that I just talked about, and also because, I'm going to talk a little bit later about the blueprint and the impacts of the blueprint, because you can't talk about attendance and you can't talk about chronic absence without talking about the investments of the blueprint. The enrollment increase, we actually saw an enrollment increase this year. Since Dr. Sanz Elizas has been the CEO, we've largely been holding flat, which in and of itself is an accomplishment, as the city's population has been declining. But this past year, we actually saw an increase of over 1,000 students. So we're very grateful for that, and I think, again, it has a lot to do with the increases you're seeing in schools, as well as increased resources in schools as a result of the blueprint. On attendance and chronic absence, we also have been outperforming other districts in terms of our thoughtful work about addressing chronic absence. Again, this is a problem that is not unique to Baltimore. It's a Maryland problem, it's a national problem. Post the pandemic, we've, school systems across the country have seen an increasing chronic absence. We certainly have. We, you know, we were in the range of 60% students chronically absent around the pandemic, and since then, as the Councilman Conway mentioned, we were at 48 today. We don't have official numbers now, but we're a little bit below that now. We'll release official numbers at the quarter. But so that 5.4% increase, I mean decrease in chronic absence that we saw last year was significant, and again, it outperforms the state in terms of what you're seeing in other places. So the next slide talks, shows that comparison between us and other jurisdictions. So while we went down four percentage points, if you look at other large districts in the state, they're actually, their chronic absence rates are going up. And so that, again, is a result of a lot of work we've been doing to try to address this issue. So strategies that we've been putting in place, I've got my team here, my attendance team here, who will probably help answer questions later to get to dig into more specifics. But we've been kind of all hands on deck in terms of addressing this issue and thinking about what it looks like. So one is making sure that we have attendance teams that are meeting regularly in schools, making sure that we're connecting with families and calling families when students are not there, doing things like home visits. You know, basically, like those of you who have worked in our schools, things that you did, I'm sure, when you were teachers, too, making sure there are incentives for students to come to school, making sure that you're engaging with families and the families have a relationship to the school community, that you're matching students who are chronically absent with resources that make sense based on their specific needs. We have also an onsite support model that we've implemented in 96 schools, so we're particularly, we have attendance teams who are working with schools to really dig deep in terms of what their particular, you know, challenges are, and helping devise support strategies and strategies to help them address those issues. We've done, also created opportunities for peer support, so students are often the best, one of your best resources to help other students make sure that they're coming and make sure that they know that they're missed when they're not there and connecting with them. We also have external partners that we collaborate with on things like data and progress monitoring, so some of the external partners that we would use in the study that is talked about here to help us look at what are the key data pieces that we should be looking at and the key metrics. And go on to the next slide. Another thing, I think, that we've been doing, as we're talking about, is we do, through our continuous improvement team. So we have a continuous improvement team. We've worked with the Carnegie Foundation over the last several years to develop strategies around continuous improvement and improvement science. We had funding from the Gates Foundation. Initially, that funded that work in other areas, but we've developed our own capacity for continuous improvement. And one of the areas we've done with that team, and I have part of my continuous improvement team here, Amy Winchester here, and one of the things we've done with that work more recently is work on attendance. So helping schools in our, when we do professional learning with schools, helping them look at what are their, identify what they think their root causes are of attendance, identify what they think their strategies are going to be, and then have them test those out. And then we go back and we check in with them. We do those Plan Do Study Act cycles with them, so they, they think of an idea, they test it out, they come back, they study it to see if it's working, and then they, you know, refine it if, in order to make it more effective, if they need to make changes to it. And what we've seen is by doing that, when you look at the table there, when schools do this and take this seriously and are really applying these PDSA cycles, when they do, the more they do it, the more cycles they do, the bigger impact they're seeing on their chronic absence. So that's a strategy that we know has been effective and that we're continuing to work with schools on. And then I just also want to talk about the blueprint. I mean, this is the season, the legislative season, there is discussion about the blueprint right now in Annapolis and potential cuts to the blueprint, and I can't underscore enough how much those blueprint investments are connected to the strategies that we're putting in place and the positive impacts we're having on chronic absence. So through blueprint concentrations of poverty dollars, of course, they pay for community schools coordinators, and community school coordinators are critical personnel in chronic absence work. They are connected to families, they know families, they are connected to resources, so they can help identify resources that help families if they, if there are barriers to attendance. We've also invested in social workers to connect with students. We have more duty centers to get students in early for pre-kindergarten. We have attendance and school climate positions that we funded through concentrations of poverty, and then we've funded our key teacher programs to, again, make sure that we're filling teacher vacancies. Having multiple adults in schools that can connect to students is really important, and it's a big, it's a big factor in students coming to school regularly. Related to that is arts programming. So we've been able to significantly increase our arts programming with blueprint funding. So prior to the blueprint, we had 174 art teachers in city schools. We, this year, have 309. And again, you need, we need programming that's worthy of our young people so that they will want to come to school, that there's things that they're coming to school for, and art programming is a good example of that, and making sure that we have that programming in place is one critical strategy as well. Things like Gifted Advanced Learning Program and AP programming, we vastly increased the percentage of, the participation of our students in Advanced Placement Program, particularly our students of color and Latino students that are enrolled in AP courses, has increased significantly. Last year, it was 3,379 students of color enrolled in our AP courses, which is the highest number we've ever seen. Not only are students enrolling in those classes, but they're sitting for the exams at a much higher rate. So you see that the number of African-American students sitting for the exams have gone up from 62% in 2021 to 90%, and Latino students during the same period from 57% to 91%. So providing those rigorous opportunities, engaging students, making sure that they have academic opportunities they're excited about is important. And then the last thing I'm going to highlight, I think, other than that Commissioner Mohammed, one of our, oh, Commissioner Mohammed is here, who is our honor board school commissioner, so I want to recognize him. Somebody else came in behind you, sorry. And then the other piece I want to highlight is athletics. So athletics is another really important investment that young people care about deeply and makes students come to school. So our middle school athletics in particular, we've greatly increased the opportunities for middle school athletics. I had the opportunity to have dinner with one of our principals over the weekend, who couldn't say enough about how much better the middle school athletics programming is and how many more students he's able to engage. So those are the kinds of programming that students really need access to in order to come to school. We look forward to this study. I think getting at the root causes is going to be really important, and I think another important part of the study is that, once this, once we identify root causes, that we would then work with other agencies to help support outside of the school walls. There's only so much we can do within the school walls. A lot of attendance and chronic absence issues have to do with other things like health of families, employment opportunities, stability of housing, transportation, and those are things that we need outside partners to help with.
Well, thank you, thank you for the presentation. What I'd like to do is to also provide opportunity for the MTA Administrator, but if there are any pressing questions for city schools right now, please ask them. If not, we can go to MTA. Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can we get those slides? I don't have them. Yeah, in the future, we'd like them ahead of the hearing so that we can leaf through them, because I can't see, and, you know. That's, yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. And I want to, I represent Murvo and Abbottston, and Abbottston is an elementary school. So the chronic absenteeism there is totally different than what it is at the high school level. And so I guess, and maybe we'll get into this with other questions, but, you know, it sounds like we just, we need to customize, basically, what those approaches are, because in my mind, you know, our, you know, elementary school kids are not going to be the ones, they could be, some of them walk to school, but other times, it's, you know, there's other issues going on in the home, or there might be some other issues. And with our high schoolers, it's transportation. And some of the schedules in some of our high schools are read, are readjusted, just to be able to get the students there in a different timeframe. So I guess my question is, with the attention that you're giving it, and I guess we'll go through the, with my colleagues, too, if there are specific requests from the principals to address certain things, how does that filter through so that you, they're, I mean, we've got principals that actually go to folks' houses?
That's right, absolutely. We have principals who go to schools' houses. We have, that's a very robust part of practice in many of our schools. And you're right that, of course, that high school needs are different, and sometimes they're related. So a high school student may not be coming because they're helping watch a younger sibling who maybe is homesick and they need care. And so that's another reason that you might see a student go out. You can't address chronic absence without really getting in and understanding what are the specific issues that are impacting the individual family, and that's why things like the community schools, the social workers, those connections to young people at whatever the age are really important, to make sure you're getting underneath that and addressing the issue specifically. Our attendance team meets regularly to look at attendance issues, and we do, we look both at trends and common things we see across schools, and then sometimes we also dig into specific issues of individual students to support there, too. And one other, I think, strategy that I didn't mention that I think is also something we're still incubating, but I think is an interesting, is a promising strategy, is transfer ambassadors. One other thing we see is that students who are transferring a lot from school to school, that can become a real problem, where students are just, you know, they're on their third new high school or their third new middle school, and that is hard to create those relationships that are so important to a student feeling seen and heard and wanting to be at school. And so identifying kind of the most at-risk transfers, where students who, there's a lot of factors that make that transfer precarious, one of which being it's the third or fourth transfer, and identifying a person to kind of help connect with that young person, connect with the sending school, connect with the receiving school, and make sure that there is, that there's support for the student at the new school. Because a lot of times, you know, the student comes in and it's the middle of the year, and there's, they don't, the school doesn't get much information. We've got a lot of students who transfer, so they may not get much information from us, just in all, full disclosure, when they receive the student. So helping support a little bit more when they're coming in to help make sure that they're scheduled correctly, that they, that there's a mentor identified in the school to connect with them. So these are all different strategies, to your point, to try to address the specific needs of different students.
And thank you, Councilmember Ramos, for the question, and then in terms of the answer, in terms of need to be very tailored, and we know these are, these are complex issues, and they're not necessarily simple solutions. I do want to go to MTA Administrator Holly Arnold. We really are appreciative of you being here today. But I will make another point, not only have been an education advocate, but also prior to this life, a transportation planner and a transportation advocate. And so one of the things we recognize in Baltimore, and I know you have said this in previous coverage, that we have a system that's been underfunded. There's been disinvestment in Baltimore City. If you look at our peer cities, who we're oftentimes compared to in terms of our numbers, our transportation system is nowhere close to the offerings of other localities. The multimodal options are not what they should be. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that, had the red line gone forward, we might have something in place right now that would also assist in moving our young people from one part of the city to another. So again, we understand that there are some issues as it relates to service delays, timeliness, the fact that, again, some things are unpredictable, but could you give us, yeah, we appreciate your presentation, but just give us some, some highlights and how we can all work together just to solve some of these issues. So thank you for being here.
Sure, absolutely. And thank you for having me, Chair, members of the council. I'm happy to be here to chat. You know, we do see this as a partnership. I'm going to Team City Schools. I've got two daughters in City Schools as well, so, and they ride the bus with me, so I take them to school on the bus, so we get kind of both the MTA perspective and the city schools' perspective there. I have a fairly short presentation, going to highlight kind of just what MTA does generally, and then dive in mostly on the city schools piece. So next slide, please. So overall, we are So overall, we are a fairly large transit agency, 13th largest by ridership in the U.S. We do have six modes. So here in Baltimore City, we have bus, light rail, metro, subway, paratransit. And then statewide, we offer a marked commuter rail service and commuter bus service. I'm not going to go through all of this, but I do want to know, my presentation focus is primarily on the bus system, but city school students ride metro, city school students ride light rail, they ride paratransit services. And so really it is kind of the gamut that we do allow the city school students to ride. Next slide. Next slide, please. There we go. Okay, so focusing in on city schools. We provide quarter-mile access to over 250 schools in the region. We currently operate 185 supplemental school trips every single day and approximately 25,000 students per day who are able to ride the system. So what does that mean? What does supplemental school trip mean? Often referred to as a tripper, that folks see, we have a section on our website focused on supplemental school service. By federal law, we are not able to provide closed-door charter school service. We are able to deviate from routes to align with school start times and school end times, which is what we do, but we have to kind of tread very carefully since we receive federal funds in terms of like how far we can go and how much we can do. And we cannot operate closed-door service, so anyone is able to ride any of our buses at any time. I will note that if you happen to get on, you know, the 28 at Poly at the end of the day, there's a good chance that it's only students on there, but officially it is open to everyone. We do coordinate with Baltimore City Public Schools. We have a dedicated school liaison who is on the phone with principals daily. We coordinate on bell time, so we receive information from city schools about how many students are in each of the schools each year, what the bell times are going to be, and we build our schedules to try and accommodate that. And our annual service plan each fall, it does take into consideration city schools as well. We did also start a couple years ago our Youth Transit Council, so we're now on the second iteration of that. And so that group is highly engaged, giving us lots of feedback about what students think about our service and how we can work better together to partner on it. Next slide. So we change our schedule three times a year, and that is per our union CBA. So we're somewhat limited in terms of like how many schedule changes we can do, when we can do them. It is baked into the agreement that we have with our union. Our fall and summer service changes basically aligns, the summer service change starts essentially the Sunday after school ends and the fall starts the Sunday before school starts. So we are aligned very closely with the school year. Our winter service change happens in February every year, and that typically makes more minor changes. We don't like to make huge changes during the middle of the school year just because it impacts a lot of people's transportation. I do want to share some examples in terms of coordination that we've done with city schools more recently. So I mentioned we don't like to do major changes in the winter. We did just add a bunch of service for Dunbar. So Dunbar did not have school tripper service. Some of the feedback that we got was they would like to see that. And so we now have orange, 54, blue, and brown trips for Dunbar students. I happened to be on the bus the other day sitting next to a Dunbar student, and he was telling me about the service and that his friends really liked it. So I think it's popular, at least based on Devon on the bus. We've also added some additional silver trips to Digital Harbor, so they did have school tripper service, but based on some feedback that we received from elected officials from the community, we added additional service, silver service there. Commodore John Rogers is a good example where I think their principal is on the phone with our chief operating officer pretty much daily. The location change has made it difficult for us to kind of get our buses in and out, but we have our service folks there ensuring that the buses are there on time and that we're able to kind of get folks in and out. It's the parking situation. We keep having mirror strikes over there. We're working with City on their move to the University of Baltimore, so coordination on that has been ongoing for a year plus, so we are ready to support that with changes. I'm not going to list all the lines, but a ton of lines to ensure that we can have school tripper service at that new location. And we are partnering with ACE Academy to pilot a service for after-school activities. One of the pieces of feedback that we hear quite frequently is that students don't feel comfortable participating in after-school activities because there is no bus service. And so we do, we are partnering on that. I will also note that we, I talk about the school trippers. Students are able to ride any of our services, so, you know, we have those 185 buses, but they can get on any bus at any time, or not any time, any bus during the times that are allowed with their student ID. Next slide. So I want to talk generally about, you know, what we're doing to improve service. And so I do want to note, again, we are a public transit agency. We provide service for, you know, over 68 million rides in 2024. We are responsible for ensuring that kids get to school. We're responsible for ensuring that people get to doctor's appointments, get to work, grandma gets to church on time. We have a number of constituencies that we are serving, and students are an important part of that. You can see by the attention that we put into it, but we do have a number of folks that we're serving. So, you know, last year, ridership was up by 15%. We had over 68 million rides we provided. We had post-pandemic highs on all of our modes. We've been really focused on hiring over the past few years. There has been, excuse me, a nationwide operator shortage that really impacted MTA. And so, you know, I've been very vocal about some of the struggles that we've had with operators. I'll get into it on the next slide, but, you know, I will fully acknowledge that, you know, we were not providing the level of service that we needed to over the past few years. We've made great strides in that and we're continuing to focus on that. So we did hire more than 400 new operators last year for the second year in a row. We've reduced our agency hiring time by about 40% and our operator vacancy rate is at 1% at this point. Safety is a huge issue, something that we're very focused on. I always want to shout out MTA police. They do an incredible job of keeping crime off of our system. So our person-related crimes, we're down 13% and we have a 76% Part 1 crime clearance rate. So, you know, I say this a lot, if you commit a crime on the system, you will be caught. Thank you so much. Next slide. We've also been really focused on the customer experience. So we launched Transit Royale last year, which is part of the transit app. It now gives you more features, more options to see more buses from different locations. So that is available to anyone in our service area. We're continuing to focus on improving our real-time availability. We've seen 90% plus real-time availability on all of our modes. We'd like to be at 100, so we're still not there, but continuing to work to improve that. And then the cut service, this is one that I will really brag about and proud of what our team has been able to do. You know, we started 2024 with cutting about 12% of service every day. So, you know, one in 10 trips is just not going to show up. We ended the year at under 2%. And so we are continuing to really focus on keeping that number down, ensuring that we are delivering the service that we say that we're going to. Next slide. So I always kind of, you know, this is a partnership. How can we all work together here? So, you know, for MTA and Baltimore City, DOT has been a fantastic partner. They, we, you know, joke a lot, they've rolled out the red carpet for us, but we will take more red carpet, some more dedicated bus lanes. Helps us to stay on time. It helps improve our reliability. It helps us avoid getting caught in traffic. It allows us to do more with less, right? Like we can make schedules that build on that. More transit signal priority. We have a transit prioritization toolkit that we would be happy to share with the city, and so we like to continue to focus there. Some additional support on dedicated bus lane and parking lane enforcement. So if people are parked in our bus stops, that means that people can't necessarily get on the bus, there are more opportunities for pass-ups. I know that City DOT is working towards wayside enforcement for cameras for some of the dedicated bus lanes and whatever support they need to roll that out. We're very supportive of that. And then on the BCPSS side, again, we do coordinate and talk frequently. I think there's always an opportunity for improved communication, and so, you know, that's on us and them, but I do want to know, you know, when we get, I can't imagine trying to coordinate 80,000 students and bell times and all that other fun stuff, but, you know, for us, it's the 1,300 operators that we have and the schedules that they have. And so ensuring that we have the information on time and that we can build those schedules that support and don't change the bell times at the last minute always helps us to, again, ensure that we're being able to provide that quality service. And so I will stop there and I'm happy to take any questions.
Again, thank you for the presentation. Before going to committee members, I'll open up Council President Cohen. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do just want to understand the arrangement between city schools and the MTA. I think Baltimore is not unique in the fact that we don't have a municipal school bus fleet for our high school kids, but given our city's overall transportation challenges, it creates a real impediment to our kids getting to school on time or in some cases being able to get home in a reasonable amount of time. And I do appreciate, I will say, the leadership of the MTA in how it treats our kids has improved dramatically under Director Arnold. I remember, Allison Perkins-Cohen will remember, not too long ago, when the MTA moved to restrict S passes for our students, and in many ways, it was just a cruel move, and it was about keeping kids from Baltimore off the bus with adults. And so I really appreciate that, I think you are much more focused on making the system work for everybody and not at the detriment or exclusion of our kids. But we still have this situation where many children in Baltimore are at a severe disadvantage in their attendance and in getting home in a reasonable amount of time because it can take 90 minutes and even more to get to school. So my question is, can you, either city schools or the MTA, can you articulate, what is the current arrangement, whether it's an MOU that governs the contract between city schools and MTA? And what does the school system, what do we pay for the ridership? I know city schools has a specific arrangement with children that are experiencing homelessness or children with special needs, but just in terms of our ridership of the MTA, what's the arrangement and what does it cost?
So I can jump in. We do have an MOU with city schools. I think it's been a few years since we updated it, but, you know, the basic premise hasn't changed. So, you know, it just has dates in there that we request for information from city schools agreeing that, you know, it's not personally identifiable, things like that, and that we will allow students to ride with the S pass during the, you know, specified hours. We, there was a state law a few years ago, I think 2019, that we do not charge city schools for use of the service. You know, I'll note, we, I think it's between $6 and $7 million that we pay annually or that we, for the supplemental service, making sure that that is available, but we no longer charge city schools for that.
Do I throw Perkins-Cohen, what is it, what's our total transportation costs for the city of Baltimore, for city schools?
I don't know if I'm going to get that off the top of my head. I know the special ed number more than I know the total transportation.
Could you just break down, it doesn't have to be exact dollars, but special ed, kids experiencing homelessness? And I think it's worth just outlining for the public the different services that we are provided to require to different subgroups of children.
Yeah. So I want to say our special ed transportation budget is in the realm of 35 to 40 million, but I, but I should definitely get back to you on that number because I didn't come prepared to speak to that. We have specialized transportation, so that's for students who would either have special, have transportation in their IEP. And so that would be students, that would be, they would be picked up at their door and then taken to their school based on, you know, whatever school they attend. We have transportation for students, specialized transportation could also include a student who is temporarily needs transportation, a student who is, is maybe broke their leg or something, is, needs temporary service. Also, we have, to your point, under McKinney-Vento, we provide transportation to students who are homeless as part of that specialized transportation as well. So we pick them up from the, from wherever they're residing and to provide transportation. We also provide transportation to students who live a certain distance depending on the age range for students. So if it's, if they're in elementary school and their zoned school is more than a mile, if they live more than a mile from their zoned school, then we provide transportation. For middle school, if their zoned school is a mile and a half, then we provide transportation. For high school, as Hall, as Director Arnold said, then we, they get S passes so they can go to high school that way. And then the other group is, we also provide transportation for students who are in swing space. So Commodore right now is in swing space, and so we transport students from the location around Commodore to where the swing space building is. And similar, well, for Douglas, they mostly receive MTA transportation because most students come from, from high school, they come from all over. And so now they, they arrive at Northwestern via MTA.
I'm going to ask this question to both city schools and MTA. Is there an appetite to renegotiate our MOU in partnership with MTA, city schools, the city council, the city of Baltimore to consider better route optimization? We know that a lot of our kids, again, are making multiple transfers to get to school. We know that in some cases, we've seen pretty significant safety challenges when you have children riding on the bus with anybody. Could be someone with a previous sex offense, could be anybody. And so I know we've heard from parents concerns about safety. So my question is, is there an appetite to consider a different path where we are thinking more strategically about how to group young people and get them to school in a more timely fashion?
So I'll start and then Holly should add. I think, you know, for, so again, as to your point, we have two types of transportation at city schools that we're thinking about. We have the yellow bus service that we provide, and then we have our partnership with MTA. On the yellow bus, we do exactly what you're saying. We look at, that's why our bell times are our bell times, is that we've done a lot of work with outside consultants to help advise about how do you get more students, how to get students to school reliably with the buses that we have available on the shortest time. We look at things like drive times and so on to make sure that we're getting students there. And so, and the consolidating of bell times that we did a few years ago has been dramatically improved, the on-time delivery and the shortness of the ride and so on. With MTA, what we do is we meet, as Holly said, or Director Arnold said, prior to the school year, and we talk about where, you know, those bell times. I think it is helpful when we don't change our bell times too often, as Director Arnold said, and we have, it helps us too. The swing space thing, I think, is a challenge that is every year. If there's new students in a swing space, that's a whole conversation. But then we try to think about where, you know, we meet to talk about where we're going to need transportation. I think I would then leave it to you as in what you do with it, how you organize based on that information about where students are going. And then when you're done, I might add a little bit something about choice.
And I just want to, I should clarify, I am primarily speaking or asking about the MTA buses, not as much the yellow buses, understanding that those are generally optimized for our kids because they're essentially school buses. So really where my primary concern is for our older kids, our high school kids that are utilizing MTA services.
I mean, absolutely. We're always willing to continue to partner, to look at the MOU. I mean, I think it works, you know, in terms of the exchange of information, partnership works fairly well today. The struggle that we have, again, is that we are federally prohibited from doing school-only service. I cannot do closed-door service. We're also somewhat limited in how far we can detour a route. It also, we have to take into consideration, you know, if we detour a route incredibly far, the impacts that it's going to have to the underlying riders, right? Like we still need to ensure that workers are getting to school on time, that people are getting to doctor's appointments, all the other things that people are using the transit system for. And if we move it to only focus on school students, then it kind of takes away from those other pieces. So we're happy to continue to partner. We're happy to continue to look at how we can improve service. Again, we've been doing that. I, you know, provided several examples just from this year. But we do have to recognize, again, the purpose of the public transit system is to ensure public transit for all.
No, I understand that. And the state of Maryland has a constitutional obligation to educate all of our students. And what we've clearly seen through our data is that in some cases, we are not doing that because we have high rates of chronic absenteeism. And I think, again, I just want to recognize and appreciate, Director Arnold, that you have been truly focused on improving this system for all riders, and I appreciate that personally as a dad and as a sometimes writer myself. But we know it's not working for a lot of our kids. And so I would ask that we dig a little deeper in terms of the partnership and consider some new or different ways of getting our kids to school on time. And the follow-up I want to send to Director Chief Perkins-Cohen is, have we at some point considered having municipal school buses for all of our kids? Do we know what that would cost? Has that, I know, I think years ago, and I brought this up and other council members, but just curious, the appetite? but just curious, the appetite there as well?
And I was also remiss in not saying that Director Arnold has reached out to actually have a meeting to talk about how to create better synergies between us and so on. So we do, we do that fairly regularly and we will do that again, just to kind of check in to see if there's ways to create better synergies. In terms of the whether we've thought about providing transportation around the city for the choice process in particular, is what I think you're saying. We have not priced that out. It would be very, very expensive. And it's not just the expense cost, it would also be the cost, it's the fact of whether you're going to have the access to the buses. There's a shortage nationally, I mean, there's a reason why, when if you drive around the country and you drive past a Board of Education's Department, you're going to see a school bus drivers needed sign. There's a lack of drivers nationally, there's a lack of buses. We've done a lot of work for the last few years to bring more buses in-house, to increase the percentage of our ridership that we control, that is our own buses as opposed to contractors, and we have increased that. But we still have to rely on contractors. So I think that would be another obstacle. It would be, I, we can try to, I can ask Jacinta to try to figure out what the cost would be. It would be very significant. And then, and because part of the challenges is our choice process by design, is that we have a range of different offerings around the city that students have access to choose from. So you have students going like spaghetti strings all over the city in terms of where they're going. And, and so creating a ridership by the MTA or by us, a program that addresses that, that, you know, strings starting in different parts of the city and crossing each other and going different ways is very, very difficult. I think, you know, we, at some times, I think, have been asked, as soon as we talk about, is there a way to provide more access to consistent programming across the city? That's also a challenge because students want different things. We have students who want CTE programming, we have students who want arts programming, we have students who want, you know, math or science-type programming. And to have all that in different places around the city is difficult too. So it's not an easy system. I think we're all inheriting a system that didn't have the, unfortunately, the foresight of building a really comprehensive subway like you see in some other similarly sized cities. And we'd be in a different situation if that had happened. Now we're in a situation where we're living with what we inherited and it's, and it causes problems that are difficult to fix.
Understand. Looking over at my colleagues from New York, and we know that unfortunately, the one thing that New York does better than Baltimore is it has a better transportation system.
Because it's not baseball. So just.
No.
But to your point, I would also say, multiple cities, Washington DC, Chicago, Philadelphia, you can name all the cities. The reality is, we do not have a comprehensive public transit system here in Baltimore. With all the attempts we've made and the Band-Aid solutions, we do not have a comprehensive system. That's at the root cause of it. But I will also say this, because I understand there'll be a number of questions around transportation, and I think it may be useful to have another hearing specifically around transportation issues. But one of the things that's, it's very glaring with this is that we understand there may be delays and latenesses or tardies because of transportation. That's different than an absence. And so I think we have to also talk about some of the other root causes as to why there are absences, right? When a, when a young person doesn't show up to school, there are multiple issues involved, right? There are family issues, there are neighborhood issues, there are academic issues, there are issues around bullying. So I don't want us to be so narrow in terms of transit, as important as it is. But again, I know there are a whole bunch of other causes as well. So again, I appreciate, you know, the sponsor, I appreciate Mr. President. I know we also have some questions from Vice Chair Parker. And after Vice Chair Parker will go on to Council, Council Vice President Middleton and also Councilman Torrance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Baltimore City Schools and the MTA for being here and for the reports from community members and from city agencies. I wanted to follow up on the Council President's comments about the MOU. And we were just speaking yesterday with some folks from the Board of School Commissioners around this, along those lines too. Are you able to provide, from either side, the MOU and the ASP with us, just so we can kind of chew on it and think about what's defined, what's not defined? In particular, I was curious, within that MOU or the ASP, are there performance metrics that the MTA commits to in terms of delivery of X number of students on time to these schools? Is there anything written there that says like, hey, we're entering this agreement, this is what we commit to, this is what we expect of the MTA?
No, I mean, it's more focused on, we will provide the service that we're providing and not performance metrics. We do, you know, have performance metrics that we're striving to meet for all of our service. It's available on our website that we're happy to share as well.
Great. On those lines, I, I know it's been a moving target, I just, you mentioned one of the things that would be helpful is bus, bus stop and bus, bus lane enforcement. Do any of your buses currently, I know it's been a moving target, do any of the buses currently are equipped with cameras that can do enforcement themselves? Or are we just, right now, we're just depending on DOT?
No, so our buses don't have cameras, DOT. So a decision was made a few years ago that DOT was going to do an RFP for wayside cameras. And so I'd have to follow up with them on that. My understanding was they were hoping to advertise this spring, so we're happy to help coordinate with them on that.
On the City Schools front, so I know you all track really closely tardies and full absences, you're granting the distinction between the two. As you all do that, I'm sorry for not knowing this, do you all track as best as possible? Is part of the standard process inquiring as to reasons? Is that, is that something like, when a student's absent in the fog with parents, do we, do we track data about why?
So wait, sorry, I neglected to introduce earlier Lori Hines and Tanya Williams from our attendance team. So I'm going to go the experts on that one.
Good afternoon, everyone. So if the school enters it into our attendance system, we can track why the student was absent.
I appreciate that. So there was, there was an if there. So if the school does it, so is it not consistent across the entire system as to whether that's, is there an expectation that, that every single time a student is late or absent at the school, asks the question and enters the information? Or is it something less than a requirement?
It's a recommended practice for all of our attendance monitors and leads in school to enter that information into our attendance system so that we can track the reasons.
How consistently do you think we do it?
It depends on the school. So some attendance leads are very good at getting that information from teachers, entering it in when notes are brought in and we update, they update the system. Others, we, we still have to work on them.
Okay.
Yes.
That sounds like a fruitful room for.
Yes, there's room for improvement.
Great. Speaking back communications with parents, which obviously is a huge part, the parents' caregiver is others who are responsible adults. Again, back to kind of standard, this may include you as well, back to like standard, standard formatting. So I now have children at two different schools because I'm a high school student. And so I'm noticing different forms of communication. One was kind of always, the one school is always an automatic phone call, now it's a text message. I would point out that I got an erroneous text message on Tuesday from my son's high school saying that he had been absent all day long when in fact he was there, and then we got an apology message afterwards. So I'm curious as to whether, what the, what the standards or expectations are around parent communication around absence or tardiness as well, and also quality control, I suppose?
Yes, so from our level at the district, we recommend all attendance leads. You saw the six key attendance strategies that Chief Perkins Cohen's talked to you all through earlier. So one of the recommendations is for all attendance leads and teachers to make moment-in-the-moment calls. So if a student is absent by periods, notify the parents. Again, we have some room for improvement. All schools from the district implement a robo-call at the end of the day to parents based on absences. But again, one of our recommendations is for schools to also do it in the moment as well.
Great, cool. I really appreciate that. Just for asking, here's your parents. So I want to hop on one particular thing related to, related to transportation. It's the specialized transportation that City Schools are responsible for. Just to encourage, I mean, I think all of us in our different districts could think about situations where that one mile for our younger students, there ought to be some flexibility in it. And I'm not saying that there isn't, but, so I was speaking with the principal of Armistead Gardens, for example, right? And they have, within one mile, they have students in Orangeville, which is across Erdman Avenue, which is an incredibly dangerous pedestrian-friendly place. And he was lifting up that, that's where that one mile barrier and the transportation needs don't quite align. Is there flexibility in that across the city or is that something that can be reconsidered given certain circumstances?
I mean, frankly, the challenge is, we're always struggling to make sure we have the buses and routes to actually support the transportation we have to cover. So especially in the swing space days, that was difficult. So in the swing space days, and still, at some point, we were, we used to be transporting all students to swing space. We had to back off on middle school students because it became, we couldn't, we just didn't have the buses. And similarly, I would say, we do try to hold fairly firm. We do look at, if we were, say, closing the school, which unfortunately we've had to do many times, we look at the routes of where, if the student is going to a new zone, we will look very carefully, we will walk the routes of where they're going to have to go. And we try to take that in consideration into where the student is zoned. It's obviously not perfect, and there are some times where a student might have a busy street to cross. But we do try to stay as much as we can. We will make exceptions, but it's really a limitation issue. We don't have the routes. I mean, this is an ongoing issue. We've been fortunate to, you know, be able to, to be delivering students to school more regularly, but is, there's not give in the system. We don't have a lot of give to be adding more routes.
Thank you very much. The last thing I want to do is just kind of offer a comment about some of the amendments, some of the ideas that came in from the reports, especially want to make sure that Council President Conway, grateful for you being here as you steward this bill for us. Wanted to mention housing stability, right, was lifted up a little bit here. I heard you all say a number of transfers, and I think about that on the other side of like housing stability, how many times students are moving across the year. I know, I work really closely with Southeast CDC and we have an entire, working with 237 and other local schools, a housing stability program to try to help prevent the disruption of families, but especially education. So wanted to make sure that that, in root causes, was, we were able to call that out as a key thing. The other thing, speaking, picking up from Mayor's Office of Internal Affairs report, just again acknowledging and wanting to include here, I know you all are very aware, but want to make sure this covers it, family and student language barriers as critically important, especially we're talking about communication around attendance and around policies, and also immigration status driving a lot of anxiety and concern, especially with longer, more complicated trips away from kind of the home base where people are in their community feel, can make a, an educated or thoughtful decision about the risk involved in getting themselves or their children to school. So wanted to make sure that made it into our final versions and we could talk more about it. Thank you.
Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was sitting here listening to, thank you, Councilman Parker, you brought up the one-mile radius issue, and I had a flashback when, a long time ago, when I was in high school, we, I lived a mile and a half away. And we had to walk, I had to walk to school every day. But in that, that extra, that little half, I'm like, and then you see the buses go past you, and here we are to this date, still following a mile radius and just, in this day and age, I think you should also kind of consider, since we're talking about absenteeism, consider putting together some form of where if someone does live that extra half a mile away and they have some type of situation where they really need, if they could get to that one mile piece, that's helping them get to school if they're willing. There just needs to be some, some changes in that. And then on the topic of the President and my colleagues mentioning the need of really looking at transportation, I can just give you a quick example of pictures of high schools and how our communities are so diverse. Here we have example, where Poly and Western are on, you know, pretty much interstate streets, but here we have Forest Park that's kind of sits back in a community. And that difference there is a clear reason, you know, we have Park Heights students, I think 30% go to Forest Park, and trying to get into that school is very difficult, even though it's close to Liberty Heights. So you really need to really think of some creative ways and incentives to, you know, advance our transportation efforts. So my other piece is, I had the pleasure of last week, working with Concentrus Education Solutions, which has been partners with the city, and how important it is to have partnerships. And their theme, they started at Forest Park High School, eight o'clock in the morning, and their theme was trying to reach students where they are going to their homes and addressing absenteeism. And the important work that they're doing, which is, you know, really about engagement and leadership, that plays a vital role in reaching each student one-on-one. And I know the school system needs those kind of extra partnerships to do that kind of work. They, I was able to really see how the students at that high school are engaged with that organization and the people that work for that organization. So, and so my question kind of leads to, I guess, some of the, you know, we have subjects, lots of reasons why our students don't go to school, and a lot of it too, is focused on what is going on at that school, bullying, bullying, why, you know, being very frightened. And what are some things that you have put in place to, to help the partners? Or are you getting data from them? What kind of work, how are you keeping that partnership moving to help that cause?
Partnerships related to absenteeism in particular.
Yes.
Yes. So, I mean, yes, we have a number of partners who are helping with, with mentoring groups with students, with home visits, to your point, with building relationships with students. We have multiple partners who do that kind of work, who are really critical in building those relationships and then following up with students if they're not coming to school, and augmenting the work that schools do, do that work as well. So they are critical, those partners really are critical. And, and, you know, with the partnership with Monzi for the youth violence prevention work, we also have identified partners in certain schools there that, that the schools work with, had identified partners who had longstanding relationships with the schools to, again, do a lot of the work about mentoring, partnering, home visits, connecting, hall monitoring, ways to, to make sure that the climate, because to your point, Madam Vice Chair is the, the, or Vice President, rather, the, the safety and the climate of the school is a big factor, and students wanting to be in school and wanting to be a part of the school community. And so really making sure that we have comprehensive strategies in place to support that kind of culture and climate and support school principals in implementing it is critical and so partners do play a key role in that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr.
Councilman Torrance, and then we'll go to Councilman Blanchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to briefly celebrate wins before I get into the devil's advocate portion of the meeting. One, Holly, I appreciate MTA. I rode the bus from, the yellow bus from Violetville to Unity Hall, and it was exactly an hour as according to Google. But also talked to our young people on the way there. I had one young person that was going from Violetville all the way to City College and had another hour bus ride. And I arrived at Unity Hall at 8:15. Right? So I, I see where it is. The system is different than when I went to high school. I think I may be the only person who attended Baltimore City Public Schools here, otherwise than the Council Vice President. I had equal distance for Carver High School and City College, right? I had a choice. It would take me 45 minutes from going from Latrobe Homes to catch the subway and metro at Johns Hopkins, getting off the metro at Mondommy Mall with the choice between the 16 and the 51, depending on which one came first around the loop is how I got to school. I also had the same choice for catching the number 15 to the 22 to get to City College as well, within 45 minutes. That is not the same system in which young people experience today. It is a system where, before you got there, Holly, people didn't really think about how I coordinated with City Schools. So I appreciate you for that. To City Schools, I have your, your bus depot in my district. We fought hard to make sure that we got those buses to fit in that area. We got the permitting done. I know you're making investments into it. But my question is, is as a former City Schools person, someone who actually wrote to help write your attendance. to help write your attendance policy, who sat in the room with people strategizing about this, I see that there are some gaps. One of the gaps I see is that we're still not requiring consistent data across the millions of dollars that we spend for home visits. Are you guys committed to actually putting out there, capturing that data? Because I think that is important after walking with Concentric and meeting young people around Culver, there was a little barriers that we knew about. I can tell you that it's either a school choice issue because of transportation, it's homelessness, or my mom can't, is working two jobs to keep a roof over her head, and she doesn't have time to get me to school, so I have to wait on my sibling to take me. There is a litany, but I want to know how are we capturing that everyday data? Because like Councilman Parker, my son was not absent one day, and I got a mistaken phone call, and he's in kindergarten. I know he got there because I dropped him off. So how are we going to consistently first make sure that the millions of dollars that we're spending on these home visits are capturing the correct data, and how are we actualizing it in schools?
I mean, so part of what you're talking about is contract monitoring, and so we do a lot with contract monitoring to make sure that our contractors are providing the services they say they're providing, and so that they're serving the number of students they're saying they're providing. So that's something we take very seriously, and making sure that they're actually delivering on the metrics that are in the contract. So that's one thing I would say in relation to outside partners that we do. We also, in terms of home visits, you know, we do have different entities who are doing home visits. We have outside partners, we have outside partners who are working directly with schools, we have outside partners who are working through the reengagement center, and then we have schools that are collecting that information. I don't know if, I do feel like it is true that because we have different entities collecting that information, do we have one central place where we're collecting it all? I don't think that we do right now. We do use information from some of those home visits when we're doing our attendance work centrally, we kind of talk about some of that information, but do we have it across the whole system and all those contractors? We probably don't. And so that is an area we could continue to look at to try to improve.
Can I receive a commitment in writing for that? Because I, as a parent, a graduate of the district, it is one of those things that I will always say as I talk to school board members, is the low-hanging fruit that keeps us from moving the numbers faster and sooner. I think that having that contract monitoring, but also a commitment to looking at metrics would be a commitment that I would like to see in this bill and amend it into this bill, because I think we need common metrics, not only for those who volunteer, but those we pay millions of dollars to do the work. Because I've seen the data from Concentric, that data does give me an idea of what's happening on the ground, but I also remember attendance people having other secondary jobs at schools. So if I'm also the attendance monitor, the community school coordinator, the person that's actually a hall monitor, too, those are all jobs that are pulling, and attendance has been secondary, even though it's a focus area of the district. I would love a commitment in writing, because as we are facing cuts for Carowen, I think that anyone around here would say we are consistent with making sure that we maintain, ensure that we send lots of funds to this district, but we just want to make sure those funds are spent usefully, but also in a manner that allows our children to succeed and show up every day.
So I think, you know, the metrics that we have, that we report to the board, have to do with chronic absence with attendance, with graduation rates. So we do have metrics, I think, and again, with the contract monitoring, we've identified some of the problems in some of the contract implementation, and then we hold people accountable for that to make sure that they're actually meeting their metrics. So there's kind of the level, there's different levels you're talking about there. There's levels of the individual contracts that you're monitoring, there's levels across the contracts in terms of what are the metrics that you're looking at in terms of how you're measuring attendance, and then there's the larger metrics, which are the outcomes of where we want students to go, and those all, all those pieces need to fold into that. So I would posit that for the school board, I know that we've held those metrics at the kind of the more strategic level of what are the outcomes we want to see for young people that we're accountable for.
Thank you, but I still haven't got an answer to getting a commitment about having this be consistent, whether it be a vendor of the district, a volunteer of the district, and I see a member of the board as president as well. I think this is a conversation to bubble up with them, because we got to make sure that we're actually getting the data, because, thank you to the sponsor, the conversation I had with him, that you guys didn't have the data, right? But I'm seeing that, and from my own experience with helping get these vendors through pre-qualification at the district, that they, we who looked at their data. So I know that there's data, I just want to make sure the data is consistent. That way, staff has reliability to help with informing their actions. My next question is, when I was at the district, there were two people that were doing attendance from the district level. Have we committed to any improvement in terms of adding more staff there? Have we added more staff? Because while we have 158 campuses, there needs to be consistently across the board to assist those campuses in implementing the attendance policy.
Sorry. Good afternoon. My name is Lori Hines. I'm the Director of Student Conduct and Attendance for Baltimore City Schools. And so to answer your question, yes, we have, last year, we have direct support, actually two schools. So also to kind of address your question earlier, Ms. Ramos, around what are the specific supports? And so we realize that there is not one cookie cutter approach to chronic absenteeism, because there are varying reasons, right, for chronic absenteeism, and the reasons at an elementary level, or even at two different elementary schools, may be very different. It depends on that demographic at that particular school. And so we don't have, or we don't want to propose this is the solution to chronic absenteeism. We really need to dig deep into it and look at, and help the school to look at what their specific barriers are. And so to that point, last year, from the district office, Congressman Torrance, we have, we had two teams for attendance. So they were made up of two persons each, and they were assigned, each team had 32 schools that they had, they provided direct support to. So on a daily basis, Monday through Friday, they would go to those schools, look at those schools' data with them, with their specific students, and they would help to strategize and implement strategies specific to their school. That work was very informative, because again, it wasn't just a cookie cutter approach. We really were able to dig deep down into the specific needs of each individual school. And so with that being said, this year, there was an additional team that was added for direct support. So we are now currently offering direct support to schools every single day, to 96 schools. And so to answer your question, that is the added, the added staff. We also have one person who is dedicated to actual, like truancy, well, it's truancy court, but we have reimagined, we're very proud of our work. I just had a meeting just yesterday with Judge Diana Smith of the District Court. And so we, together with city schools and the court, we have reimagined truancy court. So instead of it being a punitive process, it is really a process where we're able, where we're not able, we're reaching out city schools, even at the district level, we're not able to get in contact with those parents, right? But because it is now like at a court level, and they have to come into court, that is our opportunity to partner with them to identify what resources and supports there that are needed, and we can really partner with them to provide those resources and supports. And it's not a punitive process, but again, a process to identify what is needed and to partner with the parents. Because again, the end goal is not to, you know, put parents in jail or punish student, parents for not sending there, but really to identify the barriers, and let's work together, because the end goal is the same, and that is to get children to school.
Thank you. Judge Smith is a proud graduate of University of Baltimore, but also participated in the University of Baltimore's truancy court, which I'm also an alumni of. That is the restorative approach that we take with it in terms of family reunification. I'm proud of that work, but I also recognize that to inform that work, we still need that data. I'm happy that you've gone from a staff of two to eight. We're now, you're now servicing 96 schools rather than, but we still have 158, right? And I think, and this is where I just want to drive home, while we are, this report will have a financial impact for the city and have our staff time, I'm committed to doing that, but I want to see more skin in the game from city schools in terms of not only contract monitoring and data, but also looking at how it is a approach that is holistic, too, because truancy court right now is holistic. But we don't know what that holistic approach is, if we can't track the data, say we made the following referrals to counseling, we made the following referrals to social work, we made the following referrals to medical care, we made the following referrals to the mayor's office employment development, because mom went front, has a job that pays her $15 an hour, but we now got her a job that pays $30 an hour. So now she only works one job rather than two jobs. Or the, or mom needs assistance through the mayor's office of family children, family success, for down payment assistance, for rental assistance. These are all things that we need to track, because then we know holistically what the system looks like. I'll give you the example, when I was with the district, did the homelessness report, I can tell you that one time, before I left, there was $11 million just going to transportation of homeless students, right? And the state only gave a grant to the city schools for $450,000. So I'm empathetic at the level of need, but also the resources. But I want to make sure that when the resources are there, we're tracking the data so that we can make the argument to go to our state officials to get you more money. That's why I'm being the devil's advocate today, because I'm willing to find the money and help you, but I also want to make sure that when the help comes, the data's there to support the help, and we can make the argument, and not have people say there were a city in crisis, rather than a city that is meeting children at their front door, helping a mom get to work while we're dropping their kid off at school, which I've seen our principals do. I actually saw Principal Rivers go pick up a kid and bring him to school, right? These are the things and the stories that people don't hear about, but I need the basic nuts and bolts of like knowing what the landscape is, but also commitments that when we're making this investment, you're making an investment to monitor contracts. But also, I would love to see a commitment from city schools to get your team up to support every school with that comprehensive support, because that's the beautiful thing that you're doing, but we don't hear that work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Council. Okay, so we'll go to Councilmember Conway really quickly before we go to Councilman Blanchard for his question, then followed by Councilman Ramos, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll be very brief here, because I know folks have a lot of questions. I just want to make a finer point to, I think, what Councilman Torrance alluded to, that the point here is to identify those problems, so that, one, we can identify solutions, and even more, make sure we have the right solution for the right problem. And then we'll hopefully identify that with those interventions, there are some that work better than others. We'll see schools that are doing things such as knocking on doors, or, you know, doing walking school buses, or checking in on families where kids are having maybe behavioral health issues, who knows? But the hope is that this study will give us some insight on some of the core tenants of those young people that are having issues getting to school, and it may be a matter of their parents, it may be a matter of their own volition, but whatever the case is, we want to figure out how the city can be helpful in resolving those issues, and it starts with the data. So, yeah, thank you, Councilman Torrance, great point, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have MTA here, and I know that the chair referenced probably a follow-on conversation with MTA and DOT, because obviously MTA, you know, owns most of the buses, and DOT owns the streets. And so something that, when the Banner article came out, I had to ran into one of the reporters, and we were talking, and I was like, you know what'd be actually awesome, would be if y'all took the data set that showed it's 41 minutes for the average student to get to insert school here, and you took that data set and said, hey, if we had the red line, like, here's the amount of time that it would take this student, right? Because, because we have a school choice system, like, the only option is to just get way better, get a way better transit system, right? Or like make really meaningful changes to how the school choice, like, I feel like those are kind of the only two paths we have. And obviously, I fully support the former one of those. But, so I think that's something that would actually be really helpful, and the previous hearing this morning was on community engagement at DOT. I think something that would just be really empowering to, we talk, you know, complete streets was coming up there and that sort of thing. But if, you know, if you could kind of plug in the data and say like, hey, if we had something that Director Arnold and I have talked about a couple of times, is like figuring out how to get the light rail to stop being stopped at red lights through downtown, right? Like, these sorts of things are, if there were a bus lane here, like, it would have this impact on transit times for students like that. I think that would be a really, really useful in how we all kind of understand how the city works. And so I'm sure that's a big lift, and it's not, every little project doesn't need that, but does that seem feasible to be able to produce that data to inform communities? Yeah?
Yeah, no, absolutely. You know, we have some data on dedicated bus lanes in particular, and we have it down to like the specific block, the improvements that we've seen. On average, it's about a 10% improvement in travel time with dedicated bus lanes. Transit signal priority is about the same thing. Light rail is more complicated because of signal timing, which we need to figure out. But yeah, I mean, we're happy to share that, and, you know, the other thing I want to add here, because you kind of got into budget a little bit, you know, we're in the middle of a budget season in session right now, and I do want to acknowledge that the governor's budget does a lot to continue to improve transportation in the city. You know, there's additional operating funds for 42 more bus operators. The more operators I have, the more buses we can put out there, the better service and frequencies that we can provide. It also, on the capital side, includes funds for, you know, rehabbing our light rail fleet. You know, we were potentially going to lose a federal grant, so it matches that federal grant, allows us to get the light rail where it needs to go. So I would encourage, you know, support of that budget. You know, it's not everything, but it does a lot to get us kind of back on track to where we need to go, so that we can build from that.
Yeah, thank you. And maybe I should clarify my question. The, for some of these treatments, having the specific data for DOT to be able to say, if we do this, it's going to save kids across the school system X amount of time, or whatever, like, kind of what Councilman Torrance was talking about, about having the data empowers us to champion these things. Is that a, is that feasible for MTA and DOT, I guess, to work together to include that in like community engagement, to say, if we do this, that sort of thing?
Yeah, we're happy to partner with DOT on that. I mean, because we don't always know what students are riding what buses, it'll be more specific to, like, the bus system in general can improve travel time, right? Like bump outs, for example, we're looking at the east-west corridor. On the east side, a lot of it is like just bump outs, so we don't have to pull in and out. And we know specifically how much time it takes, how many accidents we have because of pulling in and pulling out, and so we're very happy to share that with the city, so they can incorporate that into their messaging.
Awesome, thank you. Councilman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I just want to apologize to you, Mr. Chair, and to the council president for jumping in earlier. I hear the word question, and, you know, that's where I'm going to head, so I do apologize for that. The question I have is just brief. I wanted to just add something to Councilmember Parker's statement. We actually don't want immigrant information. We don't want the status. We don't want you to ask, we don't want anything. So we just are, we need to just know that there is the language barrier piece, and that there is, there may be some other obstacles, but we don't want to know. I don't, because, yeah.
We don't either.
Right, yeah. Because, and I think everybody knows why, so we'll just leave it at that, yep. We know that there are specific challenges with our immigrant community, and I know that you are addressing them, and we don't really want to talk about it here. And so the other piece is, I wanted to ask the sponsor, I was looking at the bill, and that the N does call for a report on the root causes, but also some solutions. Did you, I think there might need to be some more fleshing out of that, like, if there's going to be goals and timelines, or is it just a report that would have just a more in-depth look at the root causes, and then having some suggestions? Just wondering if you're wanting to accept, you know, leave it generalized that, or have any more like specifics that you're looking at?
Sure, yeah. The intention of the bill and the report is, of course, to hopefully come away with actionable things for us to think about as a city, certainly the state, and MDOT, and of course, the school system as well. The reasons why young people are not showing up to school, you know, why we're seeing chronic absenteeism, is there a plethora of reasons for that? And I think we want to first understand the causes, and then think about our solutions and begin working on those solutions. So that's the goal of it all. We can think about, right now, there's a timeline for producing the report, but we can think about timeline for other things if we want to talk language there. I'm more than happy to consider that.
Thank you. And then lastly, I didn't hear, but I could have missed it, the role of the reengagement center. I have
Um, I have a couple of constituents that are actually just really phenomenal people that are working with our young people, and that's like one, real one-on-one work. And curious to know whether there needs to be some more support there, because I think the work that they're doing is phenomenal, and hope that we can integrate that into the, into this report and really boost up not just the reengagement center, but also the, our community schools, which I've talked about publicly as well, how important they are.
I, I couldn't agree more. Uh, the reengagement center is doing a lot of work, to your point, one-on-one, to connect with students who have been disconnected to school, um, bring them back into school. Um, they have, um, really done a lot of, again, they're doing a lot of home visits. Um, they are, um, making sure that students feel supported when they return and, uh, assigning mentors to them. They're working with DJAS on students who are coming out of the DJAS system, so that's gotten much better than it was a year and a half, two years ago, where we are, um, you know, it's not perfect, I wouldn't say by any stretch, but we're getting much more information about when students are coming out, so we can make those deep connections with students and help make sure that we get them back into our schools and that, um, and that they get reconnected to us. Um, uh, students, um, you know, when, uh, we have seen our five-year graduation rate go up recently, I think that's, you know, that's evidence of that kind of work, where we're having, um, uh, students reconnect and making sure that then we're getting them into a placement where they can get the final credits that they need and, and really get across the, um, walk across that stage.
Yeah, they, they really are, um, amazing. Um, and, and also our community schools, as we've talked about before, they are, uh, you know, hopefully we can salvage them in the, you know, budget, because, um, they also do that really important, um, really important work. Um, and I guess, uh, you know, we all, once you're making these recommendations, we're going to have to think about budget, so, um, you know, putting some of your hopes and dreams, um, and dollars, uh, I think would be super helpful for us as we think, you know, in the future, um, at, you know, when we're talking about what actually are those, you know, recommendations and how much it's going to cost, whether it is a yellow bus system, or whether it's adding, adding staff to the reengagement center, or whether, you know, all of the various things that you're talking about. I think that will be super helpful for us as we look to continue to advocate for the work that you're doing, but also, um, thinking, you know, what the city's contribution should be.
Well, on that note, I think one area that I think is, you know, we've, it, it, we of course have our role, uh, you know, rolling back the Esser investments. I think we've been fortunate to be comparatively pretty successful in terms of how we invested those resources, both in terms of them actually having, um, demonstrable impacts in things like areas like tutoring and summer programming, um, and that we're not experiencing some of the things, a, a, and we spent it also, ninety-nine point seven percent of those twenty, I think it's twenty-three grants have closed out at this point. Um, uh, we've been spending them all, and that we're not seeing the kind of impacts on FTE that you're seeing in other places where people are being laid off because they were funded by Esser. So those are all good things, and there are real implications of rolling back those resources. So summer is an area, um, where we're going to see a, a much smaller footprint in terms of what we're able to provide in terms of summer programming. Part of that is, um, credit recovery work in the summer, which is really had, part of, critical part of the toolkit in the reengagement center is having ways, multiple ways that students can get those credits, and summer is one of them. We have a robust summer graduation every year. We just, last week or two weeks ago, had our winter graduation where we had a hundred and fifty-one, um, graduates, um, from multiple different schools walk across the stage. So those kinds of investments and giving students different ways they can come back, different ways they can take courses to get those credits back, um, is an important, and summer is, is, is a key one. That's a key partnership, I'll just also say, with Youth Works, and, um, we, a lot of the students who, we are doing that credit recovery work, um, are, are, are funded through our, our partnership with, our tremendous partnership with Youth Works.
Thank you for the, for the question and the response. Before going to, uh, Councilman Jones, we do want to note that it is now one forty-six. We do need to wrap by two thirty, um, and we do also want to provide opportunity for, uh, uh, public testimony, so, um, please, uh, keep note of the time. Uh, Councilman Jones?
I, I'll be really brief. Quite funny, thank you for, for coming out and making time to be here today. Um, in regards to the data, just wanted to know if you had that, or whether or not you could provide this type of data? When it comes to, I guess, absenteeism, it's so many different reasons why such a multi-level approach, um, so many reasons why a child could be absent. So it's tough to come up with that one example or one thing, or this is what's going to fix the problem. Um, with this said, I was going to have you all tracked in the past, like, um, overarching larger trends on like why some kids are absent, because I kind of look at it as a two-track approach, where the district can handle the overall arching reasons, and where like the school will handle those specific reasons why some kids may not be going to school. Because when you look at like elementary school children, they may not be going to school, not because of the transportation issue, but because the parents just aren't getting them there. And when it come to high school kids, it may be because, so it's kind of a multi-level approach. I feel like we may have to tackle this, so when we collecting the data, I was wondering, can we have like an overall arching? This may be some of the trends that we look at, as far as like from grade level, or even from area of the city, where then we can come up with creative approaches for the overall systemic approaches, and then allow the, the schools to kind of handle the case-by-case basis?
Sure, yeah, so it's a great question. I just want to make sure we have the, um, right, so I think Lori's going to start with an answer a little bit about some of the trends, and then, uh, Amy Winchester will talk a little bit, Lori Heinz, sorry. And then Amy Winchester would talk a little bit about, um, some of the continuous improvement work we do to try to get at what you're saying, is how do you tailor the response that makes sense in that particular school?
That's cool, okay, great.
Please hit the button to the right, yeah.
Sorry, sorry. So we started this work back, um, during the pandemic, so when everyone was home, right? Um, our office specifically, we began making phone calls to parents to see, and at that time, it was about like logging on, that was the, you know, the attendance. But we continued with that. Once we came back, we had like an, an identified, um, attendance hotline if parents were having trouble. So we were trying to really get to the root causes of what were the, the trends around, or what were the barriers around? And then, like you said, schools were addressing, so a lot of, I, I, I don't want to call out the specific school, but there was a school where a lot of their students weren't coming because they did not have clean uniforms. So in response to that, the school actually bought a washer and a dryer, and they had the parents to come to the school, and they had like days for like different grades that they could come and actually wash their, you know, uniforms, and they would provide all of the, you know, materials to do that. So, again, um, I think the question was asked earlier, like when we're marking attendance, it's like you're absent, you're present, you're, you're tardy, but you can't get to the specific reason, um, that you are. It's either an unexcused absence or an excused absence, and if it is an excused absence, there are, you know, specific state codes where that's why the child was absent and it was excused, right? But to get down to the nitty-gritty of, um, we had to sleep in our car last night, and this is the, the reason, or that, or that, or that. So we are, again, so the direct support that is going to the schools, they are helping the schools to identify, like, what are the specific barriers in their individual schools? And then they're helping them to match resources to those barriers to, you know, eliminate the, the barrier of, of schools. Um, so on a, I guess, on a, a, it's more difficult to do like at a district level, but that is our response from the district, is that when our direct support staff go to the individual schools, they are helping the individual schools to identify, because again, we can say, oh, this is a barrier, this is a barrier, but this is a barrier, but this may be a barrier for your school, but it's not a barrier for your school, right? So we really have to dig deep into the specific needs and what the reason for chronic absenteeism at each individual school, and help those schools to come up with the resources and what the strategy is and what the plan is to address the reason for their school to dissipate chronic absenteeism at individual schools.
Yeah, I would just challenge to take those multiple data points and see if there are overall arching trends, like larger trends, because we can, you know, exhaust ourselves going case-by-case basis in our resources, but if there are a few overall arching things we're starting to see pattern-wise, that way we can take a larger approach to, you know, maybe get the number down just a little bit, but it's going to spread and have a harder effect, a larger effect, thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. And before going to, um, to Councilman Blanchard and hopefully, uh, getting some public testimony, and then going to our committee reports, so we have a, uh, our, our agency reports, and hopefully to get to our amendments as well, we have a lot to do. Um, but I do have one question that, that relates to, um, to attendance, and this is more so around, um, half-days, early dismissal days, um, and then also, um, weather-related events. So I know the several of us who are, who are city schools' parents, right? You, you know that there's a day that you have to pick up your, your, your young person, right? And not everyone has access to a vehicle, and so I'm curious about how that also impacts, uh, attendance, because some parents may, may make the rational choice to say, I know I can't pick my kid up this day, so I'm just not going to send them to school. Or, um, if we look at weather-related events where surrounding jurisdictions might have closed schools, and parents, parents trying to figure out, well, are we open or be closed? If I send them and they close early, I won't be able to get them. And I know that transit and transportation is a part of this, but it's also some of the family dynamics, so if you could address that, that would also be helpful, too.
Yeah, so, um, it's a great question, and you are right that, um, you, there is a large impact on, um, we have to be very thoughtful about when we create the calendar to try to mitigate the, the challenges you're talking about. So half-days have a large impact on attendance when there's a school that's, uh, when we have an early release day, um, that impacts attendance. Um, when school goes later into June, the attendance is lower in June, so when we, um, when the school day gets a lot, when the school calendar gets elongated, those day, it, it gets harder, um, for students to come then. Um, if, if, if a day off falls not on a Fri-, Monday or Friday, then, um, if it falls on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, then the day, you know, closer to the weekend around that is a problem in terms of attendance. Um, and then unfortunately, this winter, we've had challenges, um, at the individual school level, um, with, um, individual school, um, heating challenges, for example. Um, you know, when, um, this has been a particularly cold winter for Maryland, um, and when, you know, our buildings, for reasons I think we've talked about here many times before, there's been a disinvestment in, um, capital funding in Baltimore City Schools, um, at the state level for many, many years. Um, we're getting roughly three hundred and fifty million less a year than industry standards would say that we should, um, for a building portfolio of our size, and so I think our team does a magnificent job of, of utilizing the resources they have to do the best we can to keep our buildings, um, going. Um, and we've brought in outside, um, uh, experts in the contracting world to kind of assess our practices and see if we can get better, and they kind of walked away with the, they can't believe we're doing what we're doing, as well as we are with the limited resources we have. And with all that capacity, um, in a winter like this, when it's, you know, in the twenties or the teens for long weeks at a time, our buildings have a real challenge with that. They can kind of muddle through when the weather is kind of more temperate, more typical Maryland weather, but when it's really cold for a long time, they start to struggle. So we've had a lot of closures this winter, individual school closures for, um, heating reasons, and that has a big impact on attendance, especially like if that falls on a Thursday, then you're going to have real challenges getting students back on a Friday. So that kind of thing is, is very impactful for attendance.
Thank you for addressing that. Um, Councilman, uh, Blanchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A follow-up for Director Arnold. You mentioned budget, uh, state budget, specifically from the perspective of MTA's ability to support, um, students getting to school in the city. How does the, how does the current proposed budget on the state level, uh, allow you to continue to do that? Are there any specific concerns that you are gathering from these, the discussion that you're hearing? And then, very briefly, if there were like one thing that you're like, man, if we could do this one thing, or we could get the funding to do this one thing, that would have a big impact, what would it be?
Oh, that's a tough question. Um, so budget-wise, you know, the, the governor's budget does a lot to get us back on track, right? Like funding a lot of the state at good repair issues that have been ignored for a long time, and ensuring that we're actually maintaining the system that we have. We have to be really responsible stewards of that. Um, the operating budget remains whole, so we're able to continue to provide the, the current service that we're providing, and it does have, um, forty-two additional positions for bus operators in particular. Um, so every additional bus operator that we have, we're able to, to use that to provide additional service. So our team is looking at frequency improvement possibilities on, uh, certain lines where they're seeing overcrowding, where they're seeing a need for that. I think the Navy is, is one where we see a lot of overcrowding and trying to see if we can, um, better accommodate some of that, which will also benefit students, right? So we want to ensure that the students have access to the entire system, they do ride the en- entire system. That was the first part of your question for the budget, I believe. Sorry.
Right, yeah. That was the, the first part. Are there any specific concerns that you're hearing as the, as the General Assembly is discussing it? And then kind of dream one-point wishlist item?
Sure. No, I mean, I think the General Assembly seems, you know, we had our, our budget hearings a couple of weeks ago, those were very positive. I know that they are wrestling with a lot of challenges right now. I do not envy them and their jobs with the federal uncertainty and, and what that budget's going to look like. Um, but we do feel positive there. Um, in terms of, you know, what we could do, you know, obviously the red line, you know, you guys have mentioned building that project, we do have funding, uh, for that, and I think, you know, as we look long-term, funding the red line is incredibly important. I also would be remiss not to note bus service, right? Like, the bus is the background of our, our system. Um, we have our Be More Bus Plan coming out later this spring that will outline what it takes to add additional bus service, and so I think that's a, a really key piece, um, towards getting us to the system that we need and allowing us to have that flexibility to continue to improve bus service.
Thank you.
All right, thank you as well. Um, looking at, uh, our sign-up sheets for, um, public testimony, it looks like we have just one person signed up, is that, um, David Hyber? Would you like to come forward?
Good afternoon, Chair, uh, Council President Cohen, and, uh, sponsor, uh, Conway. This is a major issue. It's always been an issue. It's been an issue pre-pandemic, post-pandemic. We can define it different ways, chronic absenteeism, lack of student engagement. You know, in the seminal work W E B Du Bois wrote in the Philadelphia Negro, uh, really taking it one door at a time. And, uh, I would definitely be remiss in that, in our sixteen-year partnership with Baltimore City Schools, uh, knocking on doors, thousands and thousands and thousands of doors. Uh, there is no one panacea, we do know this. Uh, every route, as we think about this report and the root cause, uh, the one thing I would say and recommend is that you have two types of data, and I know I'm speaking to the choir. You have the quantitative, the numbers, and the qualitative. Those are the stories. Um, I really believe that what we have seen nationwide, so I don't, I don't want anyone to think that this is germane to, um, Baltimore, as we see nationwide, is that you have to peel back the layers. Uh, it can't be done through survey, uh, because who fills out surveys? And what is the accuracy of surveys? But when you create the authentic relationship and bond by walking and knocking on doors, or traversing through scooters, or whatever the case may be, um, and you're asking questions, and you're willing and prepared to hear what those answers are, that is the question I would say. Are we really, are we really willing to hear what young people and families want to tell us? Because they will tell us if we listen authentically. Uh, Baltimore City Schools did an amazing job during the pandemic. They were the first large school district in the country to do in-person home visits during the pandemic. I know, because we knocked on fifteen thousand doors. So what I would s- suggest is that, yes, the reengagement center and this work has been led by courageous people, Roger Shaw, uh, a legend in Baltimore City. Uh, is, nothing can, not enough can be said about Mr. Shaw, but, um, the thought is listening, knocking on doors from the ground level, and I know all of you can understand that. Why? Because you're politicians, that's how you campaign, one door at a time, and you're listening to your constituents, and they will tell you, and, and working with the systems and structures that the attendance teams, uh, has put in place. There's possibilities there, but there is no, there's trends, right? There are, there are national trends, there's a lot of reports. Uh, we encourage us to do an ethnographic study from the ground up as we get to the macro, uh, macro trends, and I will say this, across socio-economic, across racial lines, there is one barrier that traverses all that if you peel back the layers. I'm not talking about the initial answer, I'm talking about the stories that the students will tell us. The number one answer, socio-economic, racially, is if they, if the barriers are mitigated, even if you provide transportation, even if you provide wraparound services, even if you provide, uh, scarcity for food deserts, if students do not authentically feel that they are in a loving, caring environment, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. Loving, caring environment. Think about when you were in school and you had not just one person, but two, three, four, or five people that checked on you from, from door to door, from classroom to classroom, before school, after school. It makes the difference, even when you provide the intervention and the support and eliminate the barrier. So, my, my humble recommendation, we did nineteen thousand in-person So my humble recommendation, we did 19,000 in-person home visit school year 23, 24 for Baltimore City Schools, is let's do it from the ground up, understand what those challenges are and be, use an ethnographic approach to what we're studying, one door at a time. Thank you. Love to.
Thank you. I also see we have Audrey Edwards-Luce who's here. Please come forward. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Aubrey Edwards-Luce. I'm the Executive Director at the Sarah Neal Meyerhoff Center for Family, Children, and the Courts at University of Baltimore School of Law. We are home of the Truancy Court Project, which we now call the Tackling Chronic Absenteeism Project. Thank you so much for inviting us, Councilmember Conway. It's very great to be here with you all. We have been running this program for about 20 years. We're, as a center, we're coming up on our 25th year anniversary. I have been the Executive Director for about a year and a half. I have been a, what we call a voluntary judge or a voluntary legal mentor in our chronic absenteeism project. And the way that our program works is we are in four different schools. And throughout the years, we have been in, you know, four to five schools, in the county, in Montgomery County, in Anarundel County, in the city. But we have been in high school and middle schools and elementary schools over those spans of years. We've been in over, I think it's like 52 different schools in that period of time. And we have decided this past year to really start focusing on middle school. So our program now is just working with sixth graders in four different schools. In the past year, so far this, this school year, we've done over 150 home visits as part of our program. And the way that our, our program is structured is we have a mentor, we have a program coordinator, we have a legal attorney, as well as a case manager, who work with students in their schools, inviting them to look at their attendance every week. So we have accountability every week for them. And then we also check in with their parents outside of that time to ask, what are those issues? Really to get at the root cause of, of the absenteeism that our students are experiencing. And we've, we've submitted testimony that, you know, I'm definitely not going to read all of that now, because I know you guys have a limited amount of time. But with regards to what has been already spoken about today, we, we just want to encourage, we want to thank you so much for putting this on the table and really making sure that we have some eyes on this issue. We are so thankful to our partners at City Schools. We have worked with them and actually, they helped us identify two schools that we're in currently. And we, we stand as a resource, as we've got data of our own and are happy to help share that in this effort of being able to understand what those root causes are. With regards to some of the amendments that have been put forward, you know, we, we support and agree with the mayor's office on immigrant affairs, that, that there should be the experience of immigrant families in this report. And so what that looks like, I definitely heard the, the reticence to have any data that's on paper. We actually experience that a lot and, and we want to make sure that we don't have anything that could be subpoenaed. We're lawyers, right? So like we're, we're very sensitive to that, but we know that part of what's happening across our country is that immigrants are trying to be, that our leaders are trying to make immigrant families invisible. And we really think that that's important to resist, right? So we really want to make sure that those, those perspectives are included in the process and in the study, even if things cannot be on paper in certain ways. So we're happy to help think through that. The other thing I just wanted to elevate is that, you know, the, the idea about including an ethnographic study and really getting to hear from young people in one-on-one, we, we couldn't agree more with that. You know, what we have seen as being really kind of the secret sauce in our program, as we've seen students, you know, make 6% to 10% gains in their attendance over their period of time with us. What we've seen as the secret sauce is that sense of belonging. When students feel like they belong, it changes everything. And so we really are focused on helping parents see that they belong in their schools, helping students understand that they belong in their schools, and that really seems to help make a world of difference. So we, we stand ready to help with that. And if there are any other questions that we can answer with regards to how our program works or a data that we can provide, please do not hesitate to ask. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for the testimony. I would say both your testimony and the previous also just indicate how complex the issue is. But thank you for framing where you are also, given the current environment and some of the real concern that our vulnerable populations have. So, and the data is also very helpful. So again, thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, I know we had gone over some of the agency reports and I know that there was some, most of them, they're favorable or haven't been received at this point. However, one of the comments from the Law Department, I believe, has been addressed given the amendments. Do want to provide an opportunity to discuss those amendments or go over those. Councilman Conway, do you want to have some time for that?
Sure. So I'll touch on the amendments we have drafted thus far and based on some of the conversation, I think it might be wise for us to consider some additional ones and whether or not, Mr. Chair, you want to do that now or on second reader indifferent. So we got some amendments from the school system to sort of tweak parts of the report to make sure that it was all feasible and possible. And then also we got some amendments from the Law Department to make sure that we could legally do the things that we were trying to do in the report. Of course, the school system is not an entity of Baltimore City. It is its own entity and we cannot tell them what to do. So we are tweaking some of the language to reflect that. So that's going to be one of the amendments. We've sent, sent these out to everyone, so you should have them. And then the school system recommended a couple of other amendments. One, one of the, the original version of the bill was looking at charter schools and traditional schools and otherwise. We've narrowed the focus to focus specifically on traditional schools. Easier to really control and we have more control over the data that we're able to capture. We are going to, we're going to change the timeline for the bill. So the bill's going to focus on school year 24, 25. So we're going to be focusing on the time that we're in now, so we can begin to collect some of this data that we may not have had the opportunity to collect in the past. We have the city schools presenting, once we've developed a report and, asking that they collaborate, that once again, sort of changing, we can't require that they collaborate or that, you know, our agencies collaborate with the school. So sort of asking that they require, that they collaborate with the list of city agencies on seeing this through. So that's pretty much the long and short of what we're seeing by way of amendments. I think they're all pretty straightforward. And then regarding some of the discussion that we've had here today, and we do not have these amendments drafted, but certainly willing to consider this for second reader if folks are comfortable doing that, there's certainly, I think, a real need to add Mima to this bill, given some of the sensitivity about how we want to collect data. I think Mima would probably have pretty strong insights on how to do that sensitively so that we can have correct information and be actionable. And then there were questions about language barriers, housing stability, and a couple of other things. And I think that is currently, can be captured as long as the school system is, we are on the same page on what this means. There's a line here on the first version of the bill, second page, number nine, line three, says, "Any other data city schools finds relevant to developing a full analysis of the causes of absenteeism." So I think, you know, some of the pieces that we pointed out in the course of conversation can be captured there. I think as long as we both understand, given this conversation, what we're trying to accomplish. If it's fine with the committee, I think I'm fine leaving that the way it is and maybe leaving that understanding. But thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Conway. And I'm open to the discussion about the second reader amendments. But again, I think we can move forward. But Council President Cohen?
Thanks, Chair. Thank you, Councilman Conway. I really appreciate the thoughtful hearing and just the way all colleagues showed up today. Two quick points. Fully agree on the need for Mima to be a part of this. We know that there are, our immigrant population is our fastest-growing city schools population and they are in many ways facing a direct threat from this administration. And we saw under this administration previously, a dip in attendance where we have high populations of immigrant students. And so we want to make sure we're ahead of that this time. I would also like, before we close out, specifically around the issue of transportation, and appreciate, again, Director Arnold, on very short notice being here today, I would like a commitment in the report, and again, we can handle this on second reader, but to engage both city schools, sorry, city schools and MTA and the city council around this MOU and try to identify ways collectively that we can improve route optimization for our kids. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. All right, is there any other questions before I entertain a motion to move the amendments? Who has a question?
No, I just, logistical issue. In the past, we normally didn't pass amendments unless we had them written in, written up, unless it was the consensus of the committee as to what those would be, right? So I think there's a collective consensus around Mima, right? But we don't have, we, we could either take the sponsor's recommendation, which is just to sort of say, we have a collective understanding that the line that says, "And any other information" includes the things that we talked about today. Or we could try to come up with an amendment that would enumerate those more specifically, in which case we would need that written out.
Right. I think it's fine as stated. So is there a motion for the amendment?
Second.
All right, so the amendment's moved and properly seconded? Do we do a full call or voice vote?
You don't have to do.
All right. Is there a motion to move the bill?
So moved.
Okay, so moved by Torrance, seconded by Middleton?
Mr. Chair, point of order, I'm so sorry. I know you're trying to get out of here. Did we vote on the amendment? We need to vote on the amendments first? Oh, I thought you just asked for a motion on the bill.
And you said you meant to vote, so?
There's the written amendments. Move the amendments.
Yes, moving the amendment as written. It was seconded, it was moved by, okay. Moved by Torrance, seconded by Middleton, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, is there a motion to move the bill? Moved by Torrance?
Second.
Second. Okay. Bullock, yes. Parker?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Torrance?
Yes, with further discussion.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
All right. Oh, I'll just say, okay, so there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven yays, no nays. So this will move on to second reader at the next council meeting. With that being said, again, I would just thank everyone for being here today. It was a very fruitful conversation. Again, I appreciate city schools, appreciate MTA being here, appreciate our colleagues for the very thoughtful conversation and discussion, and looking forward to having a great term here with the Education, Youth, and Old Adults Committee. So with that being said, we will stand adjourned, enjoy the rest of your day.